Okay, everybody. Good evening and welcome to the November 1st Planning Board meeting. First on our agenda, on our agenda today, we have review minutes from October 18th. We have a special permit for a driveway. And we are going to talk about the sign by law. And then we are going to talk about the downtown plan that's being considered at the Select Board level. I unfortunately was not able to get my sharing function working on my laptop, so I am not able to share out some of these documents. And I apologize for that. I'll see what we can do about getting that up and going. So first, we have the October 18th minutes. Did everybody have a chance to take a look at those?
Yes.
All right. Do any questions or comments?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Second. We'll have to do the roll call vote, so I'll start. I, Kate.
I, Gary.
I, Marie.
I, Nancy.
I was not here.
I'm staying.
Staying.
I'm in favor.
Hi, Carl.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, all set. Next on the agenda, we have a special permit. And this is a, we'll start with Wayne, our clerk, reading the notice, the legal notice.
Okay. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Board, acting as a special permit granting authority, is scheduling a public hearing at Stockbridge Town Offices in Viarimote for 6:30 PM on Tuesday, November 1, 2022, to consider the application of Stone Ridge Associates LLC at 4 Stone Ridge Road to construct a driveway exceeding 500 feet submitted under Section 6.16.1 of the Stockbridge zoning bylaws. The application is in the clerk's office.
Thank you, Wayne. I move that we open the hearing to consider the application of Richard Bernstein from White Plains, New York, for property located at 4 Stone Ridge, Stone Ridge Road. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? I, Kate.
I, Gary.
I, Marie.
I, Nancy.
I, Wayne.
And Liz.
Mike.
Okay, thank you. All right. The following procedures will be followed. Testimony will be limited to the issues directly related to the subject matter. Only one person will be permitted to speak at a time. All discussions will go through the chair. All parties will conduct themselves civilly. Arguments between parties will not be permitted. And we'll start with the applicant. And if you could please identify yourselves by name and address for the record, I'll hand it over to whoever's starting.
Mark Walton, Forsite Land Services.
Okay.
And with me is Nick Arianti.
Okay. You want to come on up?
Sure. Do I do it like this? Sorry.
No, that's fine.
So this lot 4, lot 4 is this configuration. This is, yeah, Dougway Road. And then Stone Ridge Road runs up like this. So this is accessing off of Stone Ridge Road in this location here and is getting into the back of the parcel. It's a narrow parcel in the front. Here's Stone Ridge Road is right here. And then the driveway is proposed to mostly follow an existing woods road that runs through the property right now and comes back to a small clearing area back here where it's proposed to have a house site. So the thing that it's proposed to be 900 feet, 500 feet is back in here, that location right there. This was, it's a 13-foot gravel driveway that is proposed. The grades are 10% or lower throughout the whole thing is proposed. This is redesigned from the proposal that you looked at as a preliminary. I pulled it off of the abutting parcel, so that's not being done. The existing, the existing woods road does go over there, but we're going to keep this on the parcel. Unfortunately, it does go through a chunk of ledge here, which is sort of nice, but that's how it's going to be. We also pulled it away from the conservation restriction parcel, which is in this yellowish-green. That's what this is. So we're maintaining about 10, 15 feet away from that conservation line. This was sent in essentially just the same configuration as the other one, except for the other one had this configuration, actually came between, there's a chunk of ledge here, came very close to the CR property, and then also had the alternative going across this. So we've done away with either of those alternatives, and we're coming through here. So we're avoiding the conservation restriction parcel. I was involved with that, developing that. I went out there with Charlie Quinlan and looked at the plants that were there, the smooth rock cress, it was on piece of ledge that's actually up in here. And from what I've heard from Richard Bernstein, Charlie Quinlan, who is the botanist for Natural Heritage, went back out there and it's actually gone. The plant's gone. But nevertheless, the conservation restriction is still there, and it takes a lot to disband the conservation restriction. So we're just going to abide by that. This plan was sent in the previous application to the Stockbridge Fire Chief, the police and the Highway Department. The Fire Chief responded that he had no issues with this driveway. Police chief did not come back with any comments, and Highway did not come back with any comments. Stone Ridge Road is a private road, so Highway Department is probably not going to comment on too much. We're trying to minimize disturbance, so this would be the opening. The rest of it is going through a wooded lot. There is a culvert proposed at the driveway past water. I've been out there numerous times. This is a very dry site, good drainage. As I said, the town, it's not a town way, so we really don't have to get a permit from the town, and it's already existing curb cut there to a woods road location. It is 13-feet gravel drive, as I said, and it's approximately 90%, a 90-degree access to the road.
I think that's probably enough of my presentation. I'd like to hear the comments that I can address.
Okay. So up next, one at a time with no deliberation, if board members have questions, you can ask them of the applicant team.
Mark, I assume as you build this driveway, there'll be something, some kind of barrier to keep everything out of the conservation restriction area?
It could be conditioned that we can do that.
I mean, it sort of makes sense because that is uphill from.
I don't have, it's uphill from it, and actually the plant is up on a ledge, so.
But still, you're bringing in trucks and stuff. I mean, it probably would be good to put steel fencers.
If you, if it's approved and you put a condition that a construction fence is.
Yeah, maybe not all the way, but you know, where it goes up the hill and where it's pretty close to the CR.
All the way through here. Yeah, I'd say through here.
You know what I'm saying?
Yep. Yeah, the conservation restriction was, I think there's a 50-foot buffer. So they located the plant, there's about 50 feet to the edge of the conservation restriction, but.
I mean, it's.
We can open it up. That's fine.
Sort of looks like it should have something there.
It's close, but they did develop the conservation restriction with enough buffer to save the plant, even though the plant supposedly isn't there now.
Thank you.
And when did the botanist make that assessment?
Just the last year.
So you say that there's ledge involved in the driveway. Will there be blasting?
Doesn't necessarily have to be blasted. It could be hammered out.
Do you have the assessment from the botanist?
I do not. It's, I mean, I have the report, the original report, but I don't have anything saying it's not there. And it doesn't, it doesn't really matter. We're avoiding the conservation restriction anyways. So I think, I think we're just avoiding it.
So I can just point, so there's, when the, when the conservation restriction was officially entered, it was approved by the long-winded.
It was approved by Natural Heritage?
Yeah, Natural, Division of Fisheries, Wildlife, et cetera, the whole division. That was memorialized, it's just over a year ago, September of '21, that it went on record. It's, you know, 20 pages with the plan and everything. At that point in time, my recollection is Charlie Quinlan did go out and do just a visual at that point in time. There was no report. Natural Heritage doesn't ask him for anything.
Charlie Quinlan. Charlie Quinlan was that.
Yeah. And so that was it. It was a notice. It didn't change anything. We went ahead with what the obligation was and under the primary finding, memorialized the CR, it's there, it's not going anywhere. As Mark said, it's harder to undo than, although it's pretty hard to do, it's harder to undo. So that's really good.
Any other questions? Wayne, Liz, Carl?
Well, we're talking about the driveway. Will we be seeing plans for a house and, you know, presumably so forth? I mean, this is like.
So Carl, we're just here today for the, a special permit for a driveway greater than 500 feet.
Well, but it's also 900 feet long.
Correct.
Yeah. And my question, and I don't want to go off topic here, but the fact that matters, I'm curious to know how many other lots in this particular development will present similar conditions?
None, as far as I know. I don't think any of the others.
I'm involved with, and they're not greater than 500 feet as of yet. If they are, we will be back in front of you for a special permit for individual lots.
And any other questions from the board? No? Okay. At this point, is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this project? Is there anybody here who wishes to speak in opposition?
Is there a third choice?
I just have a general question.
Go for it.
Could you explain to me on the map? I'm Henry Kirchdorfer, 3 Dougway Road.
Yep.
And I'm pretty familiar with this site because I go up there all the time hiking. There's a stone wall that runs onto the right side of this driveway and comes to the top of the field and then heads west. Correct?
I think you're correct, yes.
Okay. Can you tell me where the corner of that stone wall is? So I can get my bearings of where this is actually happening. I think, I'm pretty sure I know where that's happening.
Yeah, I, I don't think our survey crew located it. I do know, do you know where this chunk of ledge is? That would, that would probably tell you exactly where you are back there.
Yep.
So that chunk of ledge, we're going right through the middle of it, unfortunately, but.
But the current, the current road is.
The current road is right here. You see that right there?
Yep. Oh, so it goes around the chunk of ledge.
Right. It goes onto the other parcel here, which is owned by an abutter.
Right.
Yeah, I think the wall is, is the wall on the other side. Oh, no. There's a figure.
Yeah.
Yep, there's the wall right there. Anyways.
So that would be the end of the wall?
It may continue. Our survey crew doesn't always pick up the whole thing going all the way through, but I think this is the wall going all the way up through like this.
Okay.
Yep.
And then, does it show my property line over here?
I don't think so, but it's, you're, you're, you're which one?
3.
3? You're up. Well, the, these are assessors' lots. So here's the entrance, which is, and you're the abutter here?
Yep. No, I'm not.
3 is this one.
So does 1 belong to this development?
No. No, that was, that was a previous, that's a, that's an existing lot.
I think this is.
Here's Wayne, welcome, you're out.
Yep.
All the way through here.
This development?
Hey, John, do you know what? Hey. Do you know what zone it's on?
I don't know.
I think so. I'll nip them now. That's good.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, this is the next lot over. This is the next lot over.
Henry, can you just make sure people can hear you?
Yeah, I'm, I want to say I'm concerned about this site because years ago, Mrs. Radkai, when she was alive, told us that that area, there was a spot in that area that Daniel Chester French used to go to and have these plays. And so we went and found it while Mrs. Radkai was alive, and we brought one of our friends over there who's a Lakota Indian, and he suspects that it's an Indian, a sacred Indian site. And I brought a picture of the rock formation that's up there. And past that is a flat area with a kind of a half-circle ledge rock, and in the middle of it is a stone mound.
Henry, is that where the driveway is proposed to go through?
I don't know. That's, that's why I was trying to get my bearings on that. I'd actually like to walk up there with you guys and see where you're actually going with it.
Do you know where that is?
Yeah, I know exactly where that is, yep.
Okay, Henry, any, anything further? Or I'll get back to you.
I don't want to throw the wrench into works, but I really think that you should hold off on this until we resolve this.
This is not an issue that would pertain to whether or not the application of the driveway that's been presented meets the requirement of.
Just, Nick, remember to state your name, please, further I heard.
Nick Arianti, counsel for the applicant.
Thank you. I think, did you have a comment?
Just a couple of questions. My name's Bruce Gidlin. Next, Henry down the hill, 5 Dougway.
Speak up just a little bit so people can.
Apologies for asking such preliminary questions and not immediately opposing the project, although I do support, I counsel, I recognize what you just said. I do support Henry's request that you, that you hold off making a decision this evening because of that concern. But if I, if I just might ask, so I understand where, where Henry's property is in relation to the driveway, because I wasn't over here when you were pointing it out.
I'm trying to get to his, because he's not telling me where that is. He's not. Then my next question would be if you're able to identify where our, where 5 Dougway is in relation to that.
Okay, that's okay.
Can you guys, it's kind of hard to hear you.
I can speak.
Yeah.
And I asked, I asked the question where Henry's property is in relation to the diagram, and then where, where ours at 5 Dougway, where that is in relation to the diagram, just because I can't tell.
Okay.
So, I mean, while I'm looking this up on my application, on my app here, what's your concern of this private driveway?
Could I ask Henry just a question?
Just one at a time?
Yeah, I mean, I know, but.
Absolutely, Henry, sure.
I just want to understand, not concern saying this is a specific concern, I just want to understand, since I was invited down, to just understand the distance between where the driveway is. Sorry, your last name? Get, well, my command, Gidlin Hershey, 5 Dougway. Doesn't work real fast. Bear with me. Okay, so Kirchdorfer?
Kirchdorfer.
You're, you're directly abutting, so this is your property right here.
That's close.
Yeah, that's, that's the site for your question, for sure. Because this, this rock formation is right about here. So it doesn't look like the driveway is going to impact it, but I just want to make sure.
So Richard Bernstein still owns the property.
So at this point, I guess I'd like to offer that we have some, we have an option to, to continue the hearing, to leave it open and continue the hearing and allow another site visit.
Well, Henry, you don't think that impacts, the driveway doesn't look like it's going to.
What I can tell on the map, it looks like it's going into the site and it's turning to the right into that open field. This rock formation is, you go into the site and it's, you go into the site and it's, it's up in here. In this area right here. Because this, right here, this is still an open field, correct?
Yeah. It's, yeah, it's roughly open.
This, this whole area is flat, wide open.
Yeah. And then around the perimeter here, it goes up, it goes up here.
It's almost like a ball.
Yeah, like a ball. Yeah, that site, that site's in here.
So we're not really in it right now?
No.
But maybe development could be later on if they, but they could avoid it too, if they knew where it was and what was.
Yeah, I'd be willing to meet, be up there showing to them.
We can contact Richard and find out that he wants to pay for that.
What's that?
We can contact Richard, the owner. See, I mean, I'd be glad to meet you out there.
Okay, yeah, not a problem.
My, I'm a consultant, I get paid for doing it. You're not going to pay me, so.
No.
I'll get Richard to pay me. If he agrees.
Okay.
If I may, if I, and maybe you have not even, just respectfully, I wanted to see, just point out where 5 Dougway is in relation to. So where is he in relation to you?
He's downhill from me, right on Dougway Road.
But going.
See, his property line actually runs mine.
Going to the other side, though?
Yes.
The other side of this development?
Yes.
Okay. So you're, you would be that parcel?
Right. Yeah, so that's where I got confused, because my parcel was marked number 1.
Yeah, it's, it's not the number, it's not the number of the road, it's the assessor's year. And, and this area, which is number, is that?
That's his. That's 1.
Oh, this is Henry's.
Right.
Yeah, so he's between you and this subdivision.
The, the distance between, I don't know if you can mark or not, but the distance between the edge of the open area and the direct abut is an incredibly lengthy.
Yeah, so it's a pretty far stretch.
You're chucking, you're over 400 feet.
There's a, there's a 100-foot no-cut buffer zone within the Bernstein property to begin with, off of your property as a direct abut.
So Henry, is that about 400 feet from that rock formation that you're talking about, the proposed driveway?
No.
So is that what you're not?
I'm just afraid that they're going to pull those, blast that formation out.
As part of the driveway, were?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I.
I'd really like to meet him there just to make sure.
All right, so I, I make a motion that we continue the hearing until the 15th so that these parties, Henry and Mark, can visit the site and, and take a look at this.
Is the rack, uh-oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I have a motion on the table.
Well, I want discussion.
Yeah. First, you need a second, and then you go to discussion.
No, I'll start.
Okay, then we can talk.
Yeah.
Is the rack formation and this person's property that's doing the application doing it?
Yeah, I don't know until we go there.
Well, this is the, let me just say this, from my perspective, this is the first I've ever heard of anything in all the years this property has been presented. More than 20 years ago, subdivision was approved with lots of issues more than 20 years ago. Development plans has been in front of Conservation Commission Board. Every party at the town been subject to litigation, which is ancient history, and at this point, dealing with this issue coming from an abutter, but not articulating an issue.
Nick, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I think this is, you know, the motion's on the table, and it's a discussion of the board at this point?
Well, I'd like, I would then like to hear the explanation from Nick, because I think it's pertinent information. If I can ask for his explanation, I'd like to hear it.
Okay.
This is the first, this is the first after all these years, all the parties that have been there, everyone who's scrutinized, everything going on in the site to deal with, to have to deal with this issue. It's unfortunate, and I understand that there's a lot of sensitivity to these types of issues. However, for this to spring up at literally, quite literally, the 11th hour, the 59th minute and the 59th second on an issue for a driveway application articulated by an abutter who we're not even sure relative to any location where this formation is, we wouldn't have been able to be determined without trespassing on the current applicant's and owner's site, whether or not it's on their property, we don't know. I'm not sure what the specific, even if it was determined to be there, what the remedy and recourse would be at this point in time, whether, you know, Mr. Kirchdorfer has standing to articulate and appeal and to try to, you know, make this determination. It's been a long time developing the site and getting to where we're at, and it's a, I know it's going to be an unwelcome additional hurdle to the applicant, but hopefully the decision's up to you on what to do.
Okay, thank you. Marie, you had a.
Well, it may have been answered. My, my question was, are you concerned with this site, that you're concerned with being, the driveway being there or the whole property?
I'm concerned that the driveway goes through this site. That's all I'm concerned about. From what I can tell on the map, it doesn't look like it does.
Not the house or, you know, any of that? You're just concerned about the driveway?
And the site.
And at that site.
Right.
But that site on this person's property is.
Well, we'll have to make that determination when we go up there.
That's a different, yeah. Okay.
And who is going to determine whether it's an important structure or formation?
I just want to bring it to everybody's attention because it was brought to my attention years ago. And the reason why I'm bringing this up now is, A, this is why they have public hearings and notified letters, and B, Mr. Bernstein and myself, we agreed that if he created a no-cut zone for me, I don't care what he does on his property.
Okay.
I mean, he knows who I am, and we can talk.
Well, that's fine.
So Hank, would it be possible, Henry, sorry, would it be possible to, I mean, do you have, you, you know, provide some information? If you go on a site visit, can you make sure that you're able to, you know?
Sign off on it?
Have some information so that we know that, you know, that what you're looking at is, is, you know, I think people are going to want more information than just your sense that this is.
Aside from digging up the site, which I wouldn't do, you know, that would be, that would be archaeological organization, but I'm not proposing that. I just want to make sure this driveway is not going through that site, which I don't think it is.
Right, but it's reasonable to, to ask, you know, for some sort of verification that it actually is an important site.
The only way that could happen is if we had an archaeological building. We all know what that involves. We all know what that involves.
Henry, when were you notified about anything happening on this site?
The letter that you guys sent.
When was that?
Two weeks ago.
Reason I ask, because, you know, a lot of this happens a lot of times. This is the first you've known about this happening. I understand, but it seems like this has been underway for a long time.
Well, I've hiked down that area for the longest time and the site and driveways are established, they're defined. Okay? And now there's an application to extend the driveway. So, okay, we're extending the driveway. Is it going to go through that site that I know about?
But you're saying it probably isn't. You're saying it probably isn't. So you're, so, so this application for this, this over 500 linear foot driveway isn't impacting your concerns?
If it's going through that site, it is.
But you're saying it probably isn't.
Because I, you know, I have total respect for my friends who are Native Americans. And that's one of their sites. I don't want to damage it.
But you were just saying that's likely that it's not.
Right, that's why I think you and I are going to meet up there and just confirm it.
I wish this happened like a week ago. Because then.
Well, that's why, that's why I'm here tonight because we were, through the letter of the planning board, we were given the opportunity to come here and review.
Look, we do have, although it is true that this board has, in my memory, never continued a public hearing, it is certainly an option.
Oh, no, I know that, yeah.
You know, so I think, I mean, my, I think it's reasonable for Henry to, for us to continue the hearing and for Henry to walk up there. But I also think it's going to be very important, it's going to be incumbent on you, Henry, to show, to prove that this is actually.
If it does go through that site, I'll make a bunch of phone calls.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so there's a motion on the table, which, you know.
The motion was to continue this.
Continue the hearing.
Well, the motion was.
The motion is to continue the hearing until the next planning board meeting, which is November 15.
But you have a motion on the table already that's been seconded and just having.
We're having discussion. And I'm going to call the motion. One at a time, folks. Liz, can you put your mute on? I think it's you.
Further, further discussion. I just don't want it to be a wild goose chase, that's all.
That's why I'm asking, Henry.
This is, it is at a last minute and this has been in the works for quite some time. So I just don't want it to be a.
I just want to clarify that a public hearing is, is an opportunity, that's what it is. It's an opportunity for the public to attend and raise their questions. So I do believe that it's very reasonable for Henry to be here tonight as a citizen.
It's fine, I do. I'm not questioning that.
He's in a butter.
It's not what I'm questioning at all. I just, I just don't want it to be, you heard what I said.
Okay, all right, so there's.
May I just add one thing? And, you know, I just say this with great respect and I want to thank everyone for their tremendous volunteer service here. But as Henry mentioned, the notice just came out two weeks ago. So even as you say, it's been in the works and even so, as you use the word private behind the word property, two weeks isn't respectfully a lot of notice.
That's why I asked.
Yeah. Yeah, it's really not a lot of notice. And I would even say, I don't know when you're bringing this up again, but given the potential significance of that site, I would even say that a week or two weeks isn't quite necessarily for sure sufficient time to, you know, do the due diligence that's necessary. And that's not for the, sort of.
That's the legal, that's the legal, that's the legal time frame.
I'm not arguing. I'm just, I'm staying in my comfort.
So Bruce, you work. On October 12th, okay? It was published in the paper twice.
I'm not saying there isn't, do notice, do notice for sure.
You know, the point is that this is a public hearing. It's a forum for, for the public to attend and ask questions. So we have a motion on the table, we have a second, we've had discussion. I'd like to, to call the motion and have a vote of the board on whether to continue the hearing. I will start, continue the hearing until November 15th. I vote in favor. Aye, Kate?
Can I, can I just ask a question before? Because I had my hand up, but. So if it comes where you find this rock, sort of where the driveway might be going with this. So, so you find it, not that I disagree that it probably is a historic site, but we would have to have some like documentation that by this next meeting, that it really is a sacred site.
Is there some way that you think that these people would come up with something?
I don't know.
Because how would you prove that? I mean, there isn't any written record that.
I don't know. I'd have to.
I do, that is incumbent on.
I'm sure there's someone I'm going to call. If it doesn't come to that, then you guys trash the site, then.
Maybe Rick would know.
So, you know, I think we've made that clear to Henry that it's incumbent on him to provide documentation that.
If it is with the driveway site and it is documented, then we have another discussion or we just?
Well, that's another thing to talk about.
We'll continue, you know, we're continuing the public hearing.
Okay.
So, so that's what we're voting on is to continue the hearing to November 15th. And aye, Kate. Hope we can get through it this time.
I'm sorry.
Aye, to continue. Gary?
Aye, Marie.
Aye, Nancy.
Aye, Wayne.
Aye, Carl.
Aye, Liz.
Okay, so the motion passes and I stress, Henry, that you do need to work on this. You know, I definitely pick up sort of mixed feelings around the table at the board here. I would agree.
From what I can see on the map, I think it's going to be fine.
Okay, I mean, I agree that two weeks is, is not a whole lot of time for somebody to, I've dealt with it myself. And it can be, you know, depending on where you're at in life at any given moment, two weeks is nothing. So, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Contact each other?
Why not? I'm going to recommend you talk to Richard Bernstein.
Okay.
Can you send me his contact information? Out there with you.
I was complaining that the planning board meetings are too short.
Yes.
Hey, okay, excuse me, just a point of clarification. In terms of issuing a special permit.
Yeah.
The grounds for doing so are precisely what?
I'll read you the sections from the bylaw, which is on page 65 of my version. It's under 6.16B. And it says here, "The maximum length of any driveway shall not exceed 500 feet measured from the edge of the surface of the street or road, provided however that a driveway exceeding 500 feet may be approved by special permit if a greater length is necessitated by topography or special conditions for the public good, which may include conservation, scenic landscape, or agricultural considerations." That's the wording. Okay, so.
If you ask one last question, and I didn't want to take up your time, but since the other member asked, respectfully, what's the rationale basis for the application of the special permit for the extra 400 feet?
It can't, the site can't be reached.
Can't be reached.
Right. And I say this again with great respect to all of you. And maybe this is something you have to speak with among yourselves. The site can't be reached, is that, is that a basis that meets the criteria that I just went into?
So Bruce, we'll be, we'll be discussing, we'll be discussing that, you know, and typically that would be something that the board would discuss after the public hearing. We gather information and we get input at the public hearing. Public hearing, we haven't done that, we've extended it tonight. And then, but eventually, when the public hearing is closed, then the board. And that's the type of, that's when that type of discussion would take place. But you're, you know, of course, more than welcome to attend the next, on the 15th and, and make your comments.
Right, no, I understand. I thank you again for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Yep.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so thanks, everybody. I know that was kind of unexpected, huh?
Oh, does the conservation put out a notice that they are going to conduct a site visit or have some concern on a site like this?
So they, I've noticed, so I don't go to a lot of their meetings, I do attend now and then. I think Marie, you actually go more frequently, they post their site visits.
Yeah, they post.
And.
But no butters necessarily were needed to be notified through the conservation?
That's a really good question. I'm not sure.
The butters.
I would think they would be, but that's a really good question. Let's find out.
Because again, I just, I understand the concern, but at the last second, to have somebody bring that forth is a real.
It sounded like she didn't know about it when the conservation.
I'm sure he didn't. I'm sure he would have shown up if he had. But I'm just curious if they were notifying the butters and then we notified the butters.
So we don't actually, I don't know if this has been reviewed by the concom yet.
I thought it had.
I think they said it had. I thought it had too, for some reason.
I mean, I would love to have a report from them on this, you know, that would be.
Weren't we going to share information like that at one time? That we had.
I get, I get.
Yeah, do you get Sally's?
That's something we need to work on.
Minutes of her meeting?
No.
They're not posted.
I do.
You do?
They're posted.
I get her minutes, but I don't get.
Yeah, I get, I don't get the discussion. I mean, I go on the Zoom and listen, but I do get the minutes of the meeting. She sends them to us.
Yeah, she does.
So if they approved it, it would be on one of their minutes.
Yeah, I confess I don't.
I know, I don't look at the minutes because I usually watch the.
But now I would.
But that was a long time ago. I mean, it was like when we first were, when we were doing the, the site visit, which was August.
Yeah.
You know, and I think that's when they deliberated about this.
Okay, so how's everybody moving on to the signed by law? You ready?
Yeah.
Set?
Yep.
Seatbelt on. Okay. So, um, let me just get to the, to the old one. So I'm looking, does it sign 52? So did everybody print out what was posted or what was emailed around so that?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, so there are very few, so Donna approved everything that we discussed. And she had a few pretty minor changes, like I had, you know, square inches, she added a square. That's definitely makes sense. And then she had a suggestion, which was to, for consistency, under 6.8.14 temporary signs. Number one, numeral one has reads, is everybody with me?
No, say it again.
What?
6.8.14 temporary signs.
Oh, okay. Definition?
Nope, under, it's on page nine of the document I'm looking at. 6.8.14.
Oh, there we go.
All right, so if you look at number one and number two there, Donna suggested that number one, we've got one temporary unlighted sign that over square feet in area on property that is for sale, blah, blah, blah. And then number two, she suggested putting unlighted in there as well. One temporary unlighted sign to be displayed on the premises. It's just, you know, makes sense. So she, she had that change and then there was.
6.8.5 general regulations. It looks like there's a rip.
Yeah, so remember we talked about, hold on a sec, let me get my orientation here. Yeah, thank you, Marie. We talked about the construction, a construction sign. So what she suggested was that, oh, I'm sorry, that 6.8.5 is something different. So basically what I did there was, and Donna liked that, she approved that, was we had talked about decals, okay? And so what I did was I pulled from the definition for signs accessory, the last sentence, which reads, "Signs located inside a building which are visible from outside the building are subject to all restrictions contained herein as decides a number of signs permitted." And I added that to general regulations, just to make that kind of clear. So that's just sort of duplications, you know, for, maybe to help, help people have it by having it in more than one place. And then, how's everybody with that idea?
Fine.
Does it have to say, do we have to include the word decal or is that just considered?
I think it's just considered.
It, we know it's.
I mean, but, hold on, let me look at the sign line. We could say, I think Nancy, we could probably say such as a decal. Let me.
Probably should, because I know some group is going to sit here and say, now, let me see, is a sign a decal? I mean, you know how we, you know, it probably should be, it would be better to have that.
All right, I'll add that in and run it by her.
Sign is a sign whether, you know, it's vinyl on, on, on glass or painted on plywood.
Right, so I'll run, I'll put that in and double check that. And then under, okay, so remember the question of Wayne had brought up Allegrone and the advertising on the webbing? So I took another look at that and if you go to, I'm so used to doing this on my laptop, it's so weird to be in hard copy. 6.8.13, I took another look at that just before working on it. And you'll see it reads, "The farm signs may be temporarily displayed in all zoning districts except on public property, subject to the regulations, regulations contained in section 6.8 without the need to obtain a sign permit." So except on public property. My opinion is that that would address the signage at the Soldier's Monument as being not allowed. So I.
Which one are you referring to?
Which one are you looking at?
6.8.13 under temporary signs.
Liability insurance requirement.
I think you're talking about the old.
Oh, thank you. I'm in the old one, you're right. Okay, sorry about that. Okay, so under 6.8.14, yeah, everything moved, moved up, moved forward because she added definitions. So 6.8.14, the following signs. So I, as I read that, that would mean that the Soldier's Monument, the advertising that's currently there would not be allowed.
But did we see that the select board is going to allow them to have it for an additional 30 days? Wasn't that?
I didn't see that.
I thought something came through an email that was.
I didn't see that. I mean, I can check, but I think, you know, to me, my read on that is that it's not allowed.
Thought it was allowed for 10 days.
It's public property, so the temporary sign addresses, so.
Well, it is allowed for 10 days. After that, it's not.
It's not allowed, so it's, the wording is except on public property, so that means nothing on public property.
Or does it say public property?
Under A. The following signs, so meaning what's referenced, what comes ahead, may be temporarily displayed in all zoning districts except on public property.
Would that be up to the select board or is that?
Well, select board handles temporary signs. But, you know, basically, in this case, the wording is saying that public property would not have a public sign, would not have a sign. Someone trying to speak there?
I don't think so.
No, okay.
Just a glitch in there.
So I think that, you know, that addresses that particular situation that you brought up, Wayne.
But when are they going to take it down?
I can ask about it. I'll be happy to ask about it. I can ask about it. I'll be happy to ask about it. And.
I haven't seen where they did any work yet. I don't know.
There doesn't appear to be.
They are.
Have they?
Yep, I've seen it up there.
Okay, so then, but that brought up the question, at the last meeting, we, someone brought up the question of a construction sign. So what we did was add in, under that 6.8.14, number three, and I'll read that to you, and that's for any allowable accessory sign, one temporary unlighted sign to be displayed for not more than, and we would decide the period of time, and not exceeding, and we would decide the square footage. And that would basically, if somebody has a property under construction and they need to put up, you know, the contractor sign, that would cover us. So.
So that is a sentence you have. That is not.
Yeah, that's not in there. That's not in there yet.
So you want to add that?
I want to add it, but I wanted to.
I'll read it again, yeah. Because I was like looking for it, so I wasn't.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, I wanted to run it by you first, and also, we just, you know, we just did this with not enough time to get it posted and everything. So, so again, this is under 6.8.14, and it's number three, it would be number three, for any allowable accessory sign, one temporary unlighted sign to be displayed for not more than period of time we would decide, and not exceeding size we would decide, in area.
So that would be a construction sign?
That would be like a sign.
That would just say whatever their name was.
It would be a construction sign, and it would, you know, basically, it would be up to whoever is the, the property owner to decide, okay, who's going to get this one sign? Is it the contractor, or is it the architect? Who is it? But it would be one sign. And, you know, it would allow for.
That name.
Is it, is it a problem right now?
I was asked about this at the last meeting, so, you know, that's why this was brought up.
From the audience?
I do know what you're talking about, but.
I mean, would you rather not? We don't have to have it, you know, if there's consensus on the board, but some, I think Gary, you brought it up, right? Right now, any.
See, I think, okay, if a project goes long or short, then their sign is down.
So what you're saying, that you don't want to have any sign?
No, I don't want to take it away from them. I don't.
Then we have to include some wording.
I don't, I don't see it as a problem that we need to control at this point. I just don't see it as, as an aggravation to somebody.
Okay, so someone brought it up, and we can just drop it, you know? I thought whoever brought it up.
Was, did this have something to do with the one that's over, up on Route 7, where they wanted to have the big sign, and we told them they couldn't have the big sign, they had to keep it within the boundaries of.
This would cover that.
You know, you know, where.
Yeah, right across from George's house.
Yeah, George, George's house. It's, it used to be, yeah, and they wanted to put a great big construction sign up.
It's been there a year.
Yeah, I think the Hills owned it, maybe?
Yeah.
And then somebody else bought it?
Yeah, they kind of redid the whole house and everything. I mean, huge construction.
Yeah, so maybe, I think that's what that has to do with, because they wanted to have a big sign.
And we were, we argued.
We got it down to a.
We ended up doing it as a, I think, as a permanent sign.
Sign, yeah, basically.
But this would cover that type of situation.
So if we don't add that sentence, what is it now? How many people, how many signs can go up at a construction site, and who can they be? That's the way it is right now.
It's covered.
Just one?
With this, it would be just one.
Okay, one could go up, and there's no size.
It's already covered.
It's not covered. And we do have, you know, sites where there's proliferating signs. So this would cover it.
Yeah, but if we don't do anything, how is it set now? Somebody can have just one sign on a site.
Hold on, let me correct it. If we don't. They would have to do.
They'd have to do number.
It has to do with this, right?
Yeah.
Over six square feet?
Not over.
Oh, that's not for seven.
That covers it there, doesn't it? Number one.
Also, there's the term, there's the, there's the limit, a time limit, and I would say, you know, maybe three months is too short, but anything longer than six months, I think, is a mistake.
Depends how long the construction goes on, I suppose.
So right now, it's, you know.
More than a year, and it's fine.
We have to live here with all this visual clutter as well, you know? I mean, it's not the advertising.
But there's, but there's a real, you know, there's a reason, too, that those signs are out there, and when a house is being built, especially some of the larger ones, when you get deliveries, and there's nothing there to indicate where it is. Very helpful in that regard.
So 6.8.14 right now, number one, addresses a property that's for sale or a lease. And number two, addresses any temporary sign for not more than a week and not exceeding 10 square feet in area. So we aren't really covering a construction sign.
So does this, I forgot now already what it says, but can you make it a construction sign then? Say, construction, so that it's clearer?
Or.
It doesn't, it just says one temporary unlighted, well, one temporary sign to be displayed on the premises for not more than one week, not exceeding 10 square feet in area.
One week isn't long for a construction sign.
I think, you know, what we want to do is have something here that sort of funnels things in a reasonable direction.
Right.
And I would say that, you know, to, I think one sign, you know, you do get into sign clutter, and it looks pretty awful. I've experienced it up in my neck of the woods, and it's unsightly. So I, I guess my recommendation would be to, to go ahead and.
Well, their other alternative would be is to apply for a permanent sign.
Well, which, you don't really, you know, I mean, who would actually apply for a permanent sign for?
Well, we're not giving them an alternative.
Well, that's why we're talking about this. I would say, I would say six square feet, six months tops.
Six square feet?
Six square feet is probably big, Carl.
Six square feet, six months.
I mean, right now, they're like, you know, they're not even two square feet.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Six square feet is big. I mean, that's, yeah.
Well, what are those, what is that, six square feet, one fourth? I think that's for.
It's for property that's for sale or lease.
So that could be. Six by.
Look, I think people in town are going to want something that is, is in scale, tasteful, attractive, and, you know, respects the character of the town. So I'm hoping we can, maybe what we should do is, I will send you the wording for this, and you guys can sleep on it and think about it, and then we can pick it up at the next meeting. How does that sit with everyone?
Do you feel six square feet is too big?
For a trade sign?
I mean, yeah, that's what I, what your question is. You said, okay.
Yeah, it's huge.
But your phone is too big.
Yeah, I mean, look, our, for a permanent sign, our limit is four square feet.
Okay.
The one that they did up at Hills is, is really like, I think it's two by two.
It's very small.
It's like a.
It's reasonable.
It's like a Realtor sign.
It's reasonable, and we had to work with them, you know, they.
But, I mean, it worked out. It's just that it's.
Yeah.
It's small.
It's really not a temporary sign, and it's not a permanent sign. It's a, something in between.
I think they applied as a permanent sign.
I think that, that's my recollection is that we had to do that. But if you could make that third alternative be, I think, as Carl said, you know, during a remodel, you know, or a new construction, do it up to six months, and if they wanted it longer than that, then they have to come back and reapply.
Yes.
And tell, and give us, you know, another timeline.
That seems very reasonable.
That's reasonable.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm all for four square feet or, or even two square feet. I mean, I, I just, you know, I mean, I'm, I, I find that the town has really gotten cluttered up by a lot of tempor, temporary installations of one kind or another, and, and I feel like we, you know, need to be pretty vigilant about that stuff, because the creep is so easy, you know? So, and enforcement is difficult.
So how about we start by determining a period of time? Carl said three months, I think.
Well, he said six.
I said three.
All right, so a period of time. We have, how many?
Six months would cover any project, really.
How many people, how many here are comfortable with six months?
Six months is.
But, but look at how, how long it takes, yeah, look how long it takes to build a house.
I mean, determine the time.
Especially in the winter, you can work on certainly.
Guys, one at a time. How many people, just answer me if you're comfortable with, just raise your hand if you're comfortable with six months. Raise your hand.
Better than three, but I'd rather have it longer.
Okay, so who's comfortable with a year?
A year works.
Okay. Liz?
Yeah, I think, given how long it takes to build anything these days, it's, otherwise, they just have to come back to us and get, you know, special.
Waste of time.
Yeah.
Carl, can you live with a year?
Sure.
Okay, all right, so we got a year for the timeframe. Who is, who here is comfortable with two square feet? I am.
I'd say the four.
Two?
That's one by one?
Two, two square feet is like 17 inches by 17 inches. It's like, you know, a trade sign.
Three square feet, I could live with three.
Yeah, because then it's one and a half.
I'll go with you, Gary.
How about three?
Never seen anything as anti-business as this place, but yeah, I'll go with three.
Okay, how many for three?
One, two, three, four, three square feet.
Can I just suggest that you, that we find out what a typical sign actually is?
I can do that. I will do that.
Decide what the, what the number is, we should know what they usually are. I mean, they're, they're very.
It shouldn't be any bigger than what could be in a business.
I will stop off on Route 7 and measure that sign. I can do that.
That's probably four by.
You think that's four? I was gonna say, how, how big is that sign?
I'll get the measurement, okay?
Yeah, that one there.
Yeah.
That's bigger than what you typically see. That's quite a bit bigger.
If that's out on the road, and you, and it's in a big.
We should just make sure that it's.
Field, that's not a big sign for cars going by, let's see.
Okay.
And it's not.
All right, so we will stay tuned for that information, and unless we have anything else, I'd suggest we go on to the downtown discussion. All right?
Okay, how did you live it? What did you just say?
I'm going to send out this wording.
Oh, you're going to send out the wording, okay.
And I'm going to measure a typical sign. I thought that was a good suggestion from Liz. And we'll continue it at the.
Okay.
Yep.
Wayne, you guys put things in lawns, don't you?
Yeah.
How big are those?
Two by two?
This big.
Yeah, so.
Maybe. Two and a half by two and a half?
No, maybe 18 by 18?
Yeah, tops. No, a lawn sign is top typically, I think a typical, like, political. That probably is like two.
Campaign signs.
Yeah, that's 18, 17 by 17, that's like two.
No, it's 12 by 20.
Yeah. All right, so downtown discussion, are you guys up for it?
No.
All right, so what I'd like to do here is just gather input, and, you know, I will take down comments and then review the tape, and then I'll, I'll put together, you know, all your comments and forward them to the select board.
Were you at the select board meeting this week?
I was not, but I listened to, I did listen to the tape.
Did you listen to, I mean, Tom was there, so I thought maybe you were sitting on that.
Yeah, no, I did listen to it, and Jennifer has, has printed out what they shared.
Yeah, because that was a.
Yeah, it's, there's some changes. So is, first of all, does everyone, is everyone familiar with, with what they were discussing at the select board meeting last week?
Oh, yes.
I was there, yeah.
Okay, all right, so why don't we just sort of one by one, you know, express our, our thoughts on the project? And who wants to start? Marie?
Are you talking about the crosswalks?
So we're talking about.
Just the crosswalks.
The crosswalks and the intersection.
Okay, because they didn't discuss the, that, that was going to happen later.
I know, but we kind of know.
I mean, I'm fine with the crosswalks, the way they have them here. If you, that's.
With the new plan?
Yeah, that's, I'm fine with that. I think that's as good as can happen.
What about the intersection, Marie?
The intersection, see, I'm not really sure what they want to do with it, so I don't know how to tell you that. I would like to see a small circle, a small raised, you know, whatever. I'd like to continue the stop sign heading east on, you know, coming from, you know, where the stop sign is now, coming from.
Heading east on.
Coming from west to going east at the intersection, that's right. I'd like to continue that stop sign.
Okay.
I'd like to see people be able to go around a small circle.
So you'd like a roundabout?
Well, that raised circle so that the wheels can go, you know, what do they call it? A raised circular or something or other? But I don't think they have a plan for us to really.
So did you, so you have this in mind, or do you have something?
No, well, a smaller than that. I like the one, the plan where there was just a circle in the center.
So that's, that's Wayne's information? That's not the plan? So, Marie, so this is the plan right here. Is this?
Yeah, no, I would.
Did you want something bigger than that or smaller than that?
Bigger, what's bigger? The island?
The island part? You see this part right here?
Yeah, do I want something bigger?
Did you want something round there, or?
Yeah, I would say something rounder, so that it's just sort of easier to go around. What are the, what are the, coming out from Pine Street and Route 7, what are those heavier colored, sort of.
Those are bump outs.
Those are bump outs.
Yeah, so how do you feel about those?
I don't know how I feel about them.
Okay, all right.
Can we talk about what those are for? You know, when we, instead of saying, I don't know how I feel.
Yeah, good point, good point. So the bump outs, the idea of the bump outs, the idea of this whole, of the intersection approach here is to narrow the space so that it's not so wide open, and such that people are forced to slow down and kind of stay out of one another's path.
Okay, I would, I would go with that, Kate, the way you put that. I would agree.
All right.
That's what we need to do.
Okay.
But I'm not sure this is what they're going to really.
Okay.
And that way, when they, when they have that raised oval, instead of, it can't be a circle, because there's not enough room for a circle. But if it's an oval, it can be raised enough to get people to go straight and then take a 90-degree turn, degree turn down.
Exactly.
But trucks can go over it, because they can't make a turn like that.
Exactly.
That's what that's about. That's all to slow things down.
Yeah, that's exactly. If, if you think about the four corners, Route 102 and Route 183, there used to be some horrible accidents there, and then at some point, they straightened it out so that there were right angles, and sort of forced people, you know, to go, and such that they could see. And that's a little bit, the idea here is that you're forcing people to reckon with that raised surface and, and slow down a little bit.
I would also like to see them paint arrows on the, on the road.
Okay.
For strangers that need to know they can, they need to go around that thing to go down Route 7, or, you know, I think the arrows on the road are really helpful. They're also very helpful for bicyclists, because bicyclists are not looking at signs up here, they're looking at the road.
Okay.
You know, or, or on the road, put like Route 7, Route 102, you know, so people, strangers can understand that intersection. I think that's one of the difficulties we have, is people don't really know what to do there.
That's right.
And you could also.
Anything on the road that makes it clearer what roads are and where that person is supposed to be going would be helpful.
Okay.
You might even add either a straight line or dotted lines to show where you can turn.
Yeah, a lane or arrows, yes.
Okay, so Liz, if, unless you're asking a clarifying question, I just kind of want to go one at a time, so we can, you know, get. you know, get, um, get everybody in here and I'll get to you. Okay.
Why don't we let her go next?
Do you want to go next, Liz?
Please let, let Liz go.
Um, I, I don't have your map in front of me. Does it show that fourth crosswalk that's across on the side of, um, Riggs? And in front of Judy Abdallah's?
No, it doesn't.
No, it doesn't show that.
Okay, good. So they took that out because that, I thought was a little bit of a.
Well, no, I don't. I think it's just cut off. It's not clear whether, I think that's still in the works. It's not clear.
May have taken it out because it, it made, it made no sense. You can cross on both sides of the street and go across, across by the red line. I think when you have traffic going in all different directions on that side, it's going to be a real, real dangerous place for people to cross.
So I'm sorry, you, you would like to see the crosswalk by Judy Abdallah's heading over to Riggs, heading to Riggs gone?
Right, right. Heading across that street, gone.
Okay.
That's a real trap. And you can cross, you know, you can cross over on each side and you can cross in front of the red line over to the church. Um, I do think they should, they, I think, well, they have to move the, the crosswalk in the middle because of the driveway. Um, and it looks like they're going to move it over a couple of spaces, so it'll be somewhere between Minkler and Lost Lambs. Um, it's, to lose that, to lose that crosswalk in the middle, I think we're going to be looking at more accidents than not. Because people are going to be jaywalking. Um, I know the engineers felt that it was not that long a space, but given that that's where everybody goes. They're all going to the Lost Lambs or they're all, you know, going to that building. And now there's going to be another big, um, store, or store, I believe, down where the mobile station used to be.
So you're, you're fine with moving that, the most used crosswalk? Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. And rate, you know, if, if they can be raised, raise them a little bit. It does slow people down.
Okay. All right, is that all?
I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Um, let's see. Um, Nancy?
I have no comment at this time.
No? Okay. Wayne?
I think this plan, this proposed plan, as I listened the other night, is this considered ninety percent complete at this point? I kept hearing that ninety percent complete.
I didn't hear that.
Or ninety percent conceptualized and I was, I was like, are we really ninety percent there? And there was absolutely, absolutely no consensus on this, but, well, I'm glad to hear that.
Was, Murray, were you there? Did you hear that?
I didn't hear ninety percent.
I didn't hear it on the.
I thought it was much.
I was getting the impression that we were far along down the road to having something we were going to implement.
No, I didn't get that. I felt they weren't even going to do this at all until after town meeting.
I mean, at the first meeting, I, the way it was being positioned, it sounded almost like a fait accompli to me. But, but then I think, you know, people were not shy about speaking up and that changed the dynamic of the thing.
And they're not going to do anything at all until after town meeting in May.
Funding is, has a time limit on it. First, I think there's three different sources of funding for it.
For the sidewalks.
For the sidewalk.
Sidewalks. Yeah, I can't, personally, I can't worry about the funding. I mean, what I'm, I'm thinking about here today is what I think is right for the town.
Well, no, I understand that. But I'm, what I'm saying is, are we, are we on a time clock? Because if we are, then we got to make some decisions. But if, if that's, that's all aside, I think with the design that they're proposing, it does not address the fundamental problem. The fundamental problem is that people traveling west, going left, south on seven at the red line end, it is an unnatural act to think you have the right of way across the traffic that is coming at you. So the, the stop sign at the other side of that is essential. You can't have.
The stop sign that's.
At a bell. Yeah, that, that stop sign is essential. It has to stay because if you put a yield sign there and somebody can kind of roll through that, this person that wants to go left down seven now says, I, I must not have the right of way. This is a normal intersection. You, you cannot take a, we have to encourage in the most bold way that the people turning left down seven have the right of way. To my eye, the best way to do that and the most, least expensive way to do that would put two solid, bold, white lines that are, that go on both sides and it's a traveled lane that you have no misunderstanding that you, as that person, can continue through. Everyone else has to stop. The biggest problem with that traffic is that turn and those people not understanding that they can make the turn.
So for traffic heading south, um, as they get to St. Paul's Church, there's nothing to solve them up and they just have the right of way, which is provided by two bold white lines?
Big, solid, white lines that start far enough back so that they understand that, and it goes all the way through until you're into that other side of seven. I, I think that.
That's even better than arrows.
The, the other was with, with the crosswalk, delete in the, in the middle of right by Minkler's there. I don't know. That seems like a, a very short understanding of what we have there in town. Um, and nothing against the architect, but that is the most used crosswalk in all of town and delete that and then have to come back and discuss about how to put it back. To me, that should have been something in the original design. Okay, it can't go out into a driveway on each side, but how do you, how do you, how do you, how do you do now? How do you take that out of there? And now we have to talk about putting it back in.
I know.
These folks, this is their job. And if a layman like me can say, I come through town all the time and there's, that's where people cross most of the time, I'm sorry, I, I think that's a real.
Well, isn't that what they're doing?
Well, it is. I think what Wayne's saying is, it shouldn't have even been.
Oh, yeah, but this is what we're approving.
This is what we're approving. We're wasting time on now having to put the thing back. It's the most obvious crosswalk that needs to stay. The last point, and one that I, I made these and these are very crude, I'm sorry, but I, I did this. These, these overhead aerial photos, there's two of Stockbridge and there's two of the Adams Roundabout.
Oh.
So the reason I did it was to show that, yes, indeed, it would fit. I hear all this talk, it won't fit, it's too big. There's no way you can do it. You'd have to take the monuments down. Too much of the, everything would have to be taken away. Well, it really doesn't. If you look at the measurements and how far they encroach on either side of the island, it really doesn't require taking a huge amount of either island. It can be done. Now, I just don't want it discounted because of the size. The size, it, it would fit in there. Now, as I understand it, we would lose several parking, well, it, his number was twenty-seven. We would lose twenty-seven parking spots. Now, that's significant. I agree. It may be a deal killer, but I love the idea of a roundabout and a really like, you could make it beautiful. You could make the center of that thing the showpiece in town instead of some, when I hear folks talk about creating the Norman Rockwell Main Street of Stockbridge, I think it's so far off base with what we could do there. Use some imagination, do some nice plantings and have a memorial to our veterans or something like that in the center. But have it be a mountable, shallow brick or whatever you want to do, similar to the one that's in Adams. I think it's worth a trip up there if you haven't seen that one to, to look at that. The reason it's so much different than Great Barrington is the way it's designed. It's a very shallow that comes up, trucks can go around and even cars sneak across that, that approach because it's so shallow. The one in Barrington is very steep and upright and it's not the same thing. So I just don't want people to discount that roundabout in light of the size because it would fit in there based on what I've tried to measure and understand about the roundabouts.
Thank you, Wayne.
You're welcome.
Um, Gary?
Oh, I would just echo what Liz said is that I think the crosswalk should be, um, uh, elevated ever so gently, like in Lenox. I think that works pretty good.
What do you think it does?
I think it, it, um, it slows the traffic down. I mean, I go through Lenox pretty often and.
It makes pedestrians more visible too because.
And you're up just a hair and they're all so, I don't know, I just think that, and it makes the crosswalk a little more visible to the eye too. And I, the ones that are in Lenox, it looks to me like they're okay to plow over. They don't seem to be an issue, so.
They are. Anything else, Gary? Okay, that was easy. Um, Carl?
So, um.
I love all these, you know, very differing opinions here.
Everybody's down.
And, and that is what my first question is. I mean, we're purely here to offer advice to the planning, to, to, to the select board.
Correct.
Exactly.
Input.
Well, no, it's input. Okay, fine. Um, uh, all of this is eventually going to town meeting.
Correct. The select board is still gathering input and eventually they will arrive at something and yes, it goes to town meeting.
And, and then just to remind me, like, what's driving this? Because, I mean, I mean, I feel like, I mean, I'm, I'm old enough now that I remember when we last refurbished Main Street and that doesn't seem all that long ago. But what's the, what's the hurry?
Oh, thank you. Okay, got it.
I don't know.
Anything else?
I, that's maybe a rhetorical question. Um, you know, in my head, I think a roundabout or an island in the middle of, of, of that intersection, um, uh, is, you know, I mean, I mean, it could be beautifully designed, but I really can't imagine it honestly being anything but a hassle. And, um, and I think there should be a four-way stop. I mean, I don't know why people on Route seven on Main Street have a right of way to go through that intersection. And, uh, and as far as, as I'm concerned, suppressing crosswalks, the crosswalk that goes from, is it because the driveways are there? The St. Paul's?
Yes.
Yeah.
St. Paul's driveway and the.
And the muse.
Muse. That's, that's a problem.
If you're in a wheelchair.
So apparently, um, Mike and Donna have said that that's illegal. And I, I did ask.
So they say it's illegal.
Yeah.
The, the engineering codes show that it's illegal. If they were to build a new street now, they couldn't put it there.
If we hadn't said anything, we'd be fine. Yeah.
I mean, I have to.
Exactly. Could we live with it the way it is?
You can. You can. You can just paint signs for the next five years. That's another option.
Yeah. I mean, to me, you know, um, I mean, that's how I cross the street. And especially on days when like the traffic is, makes it hairy to, to, to bike across. It's the way that the, uh, you know, the, the kids from the, from the preschool go to the library. It's in a perfectly good place. Spending tens of thousands of dollars to move it five feet away, um, doesn't, to my mind, make a whole lot of sense, but, um, you know, if there's some.
What it does.
Reply. Can't argue.
It's about, it's about being ADA compliant. And we're not talking just about children. We're talking about blind people. We're talking about, you know, because there are things they will put on the crosswalk so they'll be bumpy so that they'll know where it is. Um, you can't put that in the middle of the driveway.
I don't see anything non-ADA compliant about what's existing.
All right. So, um, I mean, you know, I don't think we're going to solve this thing, so I'm just really interested in your input. Carl, do you have any more input?
Um, not really.
You sure?
No, I, 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 I just, I, I'm really, I deeply believe that, um, you know, in cutting the conversation short, because I don't think any of this is worth it.
Okay, got it. All right. Okay. So that just leaves me and I'll try to be brief. Um, my feeling is that, uh, I've said this before and I'll say it again. I think we should be looking to slow the traffic down before it even gets to town on Route seven south and Route seven north. The highway Route seven is very wide and to my eye and my experience, there's nothing that really conveys to, um, people and cars that they're getting close to a small town, a small village. So that's one thought I have. I also, I was talking to a, a resident, um, a younger resident, European, who suggested that, um, that the whole sort of intersection area be treated kind of like, in a different material, sort of like a piazza. And if you look at West Stockbridge on the main street, as you come into West Stockbridge and then there's a left-hand turn, I don't know the name of the road, but it, the, the road you turn left on to, it goes by Baldwin and then it goes over to that coffee shop. If you look at that area there, and the whole sort of intersection there is made up of a different material from the asphalt. And to me, it feels like a, a visual cue saying, um, first of all, it's kind of rough, you know, it's a little, it's like a concrete brick.
No, I think it's asphalt. It's just that they put the, the brick in. Slide over and lit.
Yeah. And so it's, you know, whatever the material is, it's just kind of, um, visually, it's a cue to me that says, you know, slow up. And then the roughness also provides that, you know, that sort of sensory thing of, of slow up. So I like that idea. And then in looking at this plan, I noticed that in moving that crosswalk, the, the one that's most used, some trees come out and that kind of makes me nervous. I mean, I feel like the attractiveness of downtown Stockbridge is a, a really big part of it is those tall trees. So many towns when they redo, Liz, whoever's got their, their sound on, can you put, press mute? Whoever, you know, tr, towns like, that redo their entire main streets, they often end up with these, they put in these small spindly trees that don't provide shade and I feel like in Stockbridge are beautiful tall trees. They tie the two sides of the street together. They provide shade in the summertime and I think they just, they really enhance the downtown block. As far as the intersection area, I do think that traffic cal, traffic calming, you know, narrowing that amount of space, I do think that it can, you know, as it's shown here with the bump outs and with sort of a rough, rough, rougher surface in the middle there, I do think that they can help direct people and, and force them to slow down. Aesthetic considerations, I would say that less is more. I do not like those green neon flashing signs that you see, um, in Great Barrington. I don't think that they are compatible with, with Stockbridge, the downtown area. And then, um, I think that the attracted, the raised sidewalks in Lenox, you know, with that sort of, um, brick colored, um, stamped surface, whatever it is, I think they're really effective. They slow me down. And I think it is, it seems like it is safer for pedestrians and it just, to me, it's so much more attractive than these, these painted green or red, you know, strips that you see in other parts here and in other parts of the, the county. So I would, I, I would, you know, you know, love to see the, sort of the raised surfaces. And I'm hearing that from, you know, people I've spoken to as well, that they like the idea of, of the raised surfaces, the way they're done in Lenox. So that's kind of what I had to say. And, um, and then I'm kind of wondering when Mastod is going to, um, address that bridge just south of town. Thing is, looks horrible. Has anyone noticed the rails just like, kind of like lying there? Because they've, they've come off the, the posts.
They put your barriers up like they do everywhere else now. They don't fix anything. They just put yours.
Yes, they did over on 102.
One, one thing on the, wha, what is our, what's our reason for doing this?
Just to, just to give them info. Are you talking about the town?
Project.
Oh, oh.
Oh, I thought you meant.
What is the initial? What is the initial reason we started to look at altering this intersection?
This is the accidents on, uh, the red line.
So the accidents.
So I think, Wayne, that, that's another concern I have about this project, since you brought it up. I think it was generated by a very small number of people.
So if it is the accidents that we're starting to go through this project because of, what would eliminate that? I mean, okay, you want to slow people down, I understand, but I think what really causes more of the accidents is that this guy is gonna try to go because he's trying to, and he didn't see that one coming because he was only, but, and boom, you hit somebody in the bumper. I think that is nine out of 10 times what happens there. They're not necessarily dangerous accidents per se, but if we're trying to eliminate those things, I think clear definition of what is the line and, uh, the, the line of traffic is gonna be the most effective thing to stopping that. Because three sides will have to stop. You already are in a congested Main Street. I don't see speed there as much the concern as it is the indecision of people. They're, they're trying to look at four or five different things and make their move. Boom, they're out there, except the guy in front of them didn't go in time and they hit him. So I really, this, the center island is mountable because trucks are gonna need to trailer over that. Well, guess what cars are gonna do? They're gonna go follow that trailer truck right over that raised thing, just like you do over this painted thing. That is not gonna be a, a, a thing to me that makes people, oh, I gotta go out and around. No, I don't, because I just saw him go over it. I'm going over it, it's a shorter way.
Well, do you know that strip in Lee, um, as you're heading towards the Pike?
Mm-hmm.
I don't like going over that because it's so rough and unpleasant, you know, to drive over it. So, you know, I think if it was something like that.
But you're at speed there more than you are here. Here, you're gonna, you're already pretty slow. Over there, I know what you mean, I travel it every day, but, I know what you mean, but I do feel like I'm going 35 or so through there, and here I'm already calmed down to 20 or so to make that turn, and I don't think that center island's gonna do a darn thing.
I sort of, so I asked about, Marie, you were there, so you heard everyone laugh, and I suggested it, but, um, I don't, I don't understand why we, I wanted an answer and I didn't get an answer, but I'd love to know the answer as to why we wouldn't consider a stop sign at St. Paul's Church as you're heading south. Because the other day I was turning, um, onto Main Street.
That's the four-way stop.
Yeah, from Pine Street, and, you know, I was coming down Prospect Hill Road and turning left, you know, to go towards Elm Street, and because there was a pedestrian in the crosswalk from the Red Line Inn, the car heading south was stopped, and it was so much easier for me to make that turn. It was like, okay.
The reason you won't, you don't want a stop sign there is, that's gotta be 75% of the traffic, keep them moving, otherwise you back up past the Playhouse. Just keep that moving, keep them moving, that is the.
See, I wanted them to slow down and smell the coffee.
I, I hear you, I do. Keep the slow, keep, keep them moving slowly.
I like summer weekends because, um, when, 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 when the traffic gets completely backed up on Main Street because it all becomes so quiet.
Nice. Yeah, maybe, I mean, Brownlee suggested yield signs, I like, I, I kind of wanted to hear the engineer respond to that, I thought that was a good suggestion.
I remember the first, the, the girl that was the engineer before this van guy, but when we first talked about this, and that was her, that's what she said when they first talked about these, and she just said, you know, if you stop every single car that comes down Main Street, you're just gonna slow traffic down so much, it's just gonna back up in busy, you know? So, as well as the fact that it's so wide, you don't see a stop sign way over on the right-hand side?
At St. Paul's?
You'd have to really be looking, because you're looking at all this traffic coming in here and there's a stop sign way over in front of St. Paul's Church. She, I just remember her talking about how that would be not, um, helpful.
Mm-hmm, well, that's, you know.
That was what she was saying.
Yeah, so maybe, you know, those, those raised crosswalks, you know, that's, that's something that, you know, they would address it without creating a pileup.
Well, you don't, oh, I'm sorry.
What, what happens if you have raised crosswalks surrounding that whole intersection? So you're coming this way and you want to go south, so you're, you're bumping over here, then you get over to here, and then you gotta slow down for this one to bump this way when you've got people coming. This crosswalk scares the life out of me in front of the Red Line Inn to St. Paul's.
Do you want me to put your comments in?
When you're coming, people don't stop at that stop because the stop sign is way over here, they don't even see it. So they don't stop, they slow down to see if cars are coming this way, but they're, you're looking this way, but you're not looking at all these people crossing to the Red Line Inn with their luggage and, because they're not looking because they're in the crosswalk.
Wait, so you, are you saying you don't like the crosswalks at all, or?
I don't like that one.
Right, the Red Line Inn one?
Red Line Inn too, I'm sure they need it.
Yeah.
Right, the Red Line Inn likes it, and the church, I'm sure, must like it, but it just, it scares me when you see people coming from South Street.
That would be a big hit.
Well, I think.
Turn right on to Main, and they've got that cross, you've got two crosswalks right there, but that one, right?
I think that maybe the idea is that with the bump outs, um, you know, it, it's, again, it's slowing people down and, you know, I mean, I know we're.
Coming up from South Street, I can see that, you know, but it's the one.
There used to be bump outs there, there were natural ones, but they were.
Well, it used to be, yeah.
The islands came in farther.
Yeah, I mean, the whole thing was sort of much more relaxed, of course, we have exponentially more cars on the road these days. But, um, okay, so have I captured everybody's comments? Anybody have any final?
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
That one, that one's great.
Oh, for favor, I can.
I, 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 Gary.
Thanks, everyone.